And this is going to be double timed because we're going to do for that. We're going to do the prayer and the pledge to cover the council meeting also.
Okay.
Please go ahead Reverend.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Pastor Russ Wynn. I pastor the outdoor church in Benita Springs. I just want to say thank you to, I just want to offer as the pastor of our church. This is going on our 14th year, meeting at Riverside Park. And I just want to say thank you for this, for the government, for the city, for allowing us to be out there. And also for the beautiful job that you do every Christmas month, you know, December, about the lights. We have a Christmas Eve service that's out there. Last year, we had over 2,000 people that came out and they're just amazed about all the lighting that the city puts in and the beauty of that. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of our church body for allowing us to meet out there on that property. So thank you very much. Let's bow our heads, ask God's blessings to be on our gathering. Father, we ask you to come today. Thank you, Lord, for these men and women who give of their skill, their talents, and their abilities to serve this beautiful town called Benita Springs. And we just ask that your hand of wisdom, guidance, and direction would be upon each here today, this evening, Lord, as they look at the agenda that's before them. And we just pray, God, that you would give them insight, Lord, on the problems and the challenges that they may be seeking, maybe that's before them. We just pray that you would just guide and direct. We pray, God, for the shooting that took place in Georgia. We pray for those families, people that have lost lives, and pray your hand of comfort and strength to be upon the families and the friends in that community. We pray for the upcoming election, not only in our local, but internationally, that you would guide the votes and that, God, that your hand will be upon that process as we elect leadership, not only locally, but nationally. We give all this to you. We lay it at your throne in your name. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance is to count of three. One, two.
A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, how about roll call, clerk? Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Yes.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Fulick.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay, well, I'm going to add the mayor's welcome. You're all welcome. It's almost all staff. We've got a couple civilians here. Thank you. Public comment, please? Public comment? Now, we're going to start with the budget. If you have a comment on the city budget, please come forward at this time.
Ron George from Benita Springs, Little Hickory Island area. I just wanted to comment. I looked at my TRIM notice and I noticed that of all the taxing authorities, that Benita Springs City is the only one asking for more money. And so, and I looked at mine, and not that I can't afford it, but it looks like best-case scenario, or not the best-case scenario, but the scenario would be about a 22% increase in the city's share of my taxes. And, you know, if the city needs it, fine. I'm probably, you know, like many of us, in better shape than most of the residents. But I just hope the city understands, you know, this is a trend that, you know, we don't want to see. And, you know, it's supposed to be government light and right, and I don't know what the trade-off is, but it definitely, you know, you've got to make sure that the tax dollars are being used the way that all the citizens want them. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We've got a crowd tonight. City clerk, I guess you get to read it?
I'll read the title into the record. This is a resolution of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, Lee County, Florida, adopting the tentative levying of ad valorem taxes for the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, for fiscal year 2024-2025, establishing the date, time, and place for a final hearing to adopt the final ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2024-2025, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, on September 4, 2024, adopted fiscal year 2024-2025 tentative millage rate following a public hearing as required by Florida statute And whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the City of Benita Springs has been certified by the Lee County Property Appraiser to the City of Benita Springs as $17,566,482,114. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs. Number one, the fiscal year 2024-2025 tentative ad valorem operating millage is hereby adopted at 0.9946 mils, which equates to 0.9946 per $1,000 of assessed property value, which is greater than the rollback rate of 0.7359 mils by 35.15% mils, and the levy of an annual tax for Sid year is made. Number two, the tentative millage rate is established to provide funding for the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, and the resulting increase in ad valorem tax revenues is necessary to fund various stormwater improvements, transportation improvements, environmental protection projects, community aesthetics projects, and other capital projects. Number three, a public meeting and hearing will be held to consider and adopt the final millage rate for fiscal year 2024-2025 as follows. Date, September 18, 2024. Time, 5:30 PM. Place, City Hall 9101 Benita Beach Road, Benita Springs, Florida, 34135. Number four, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by City Council.
Okay, I'd like a discussion on this. I'd like to start out with a 35% increase in the taxes. It's outrageous. It's huge. And further investigation into the funds of the city, that there is money available if we need to refinish, refurbish our reserves and our emergency funds, there's money available that can be allocated by the City Council from the capital improvement budgets where there's money that's sitting there that can be moved to replenish our reserves and our emergency fund. I make a motion that we refill our reserves and our operating budget from that, have the staff come back with a way to replenish the reserves and our emergency fund. Now, come November, the ad valorem taxes shall be coming into the city, which we can use to replenish our CPI allocations that are present. Currently, there's $5.852 million that can be, that is available, and we could replenish the operating funds with $2.7 million. And so that's my motion that we do that, replenish our reserves from the capital improvement, even though it seems like the hurricane is not going to hit us, not this week anyway. So that's my motion. I have a second, please. Okay, anybody else?
I make a motion that we approve and discuss it again on the 18th. So millage being set at what we decided, 9.946 mils, which is per 1,000. And that's my motion.
Yes.
Do you have a question? Could we ask staff to provide us with numbers of like 500,000 if we were to see what that number would be? And 1 million? The 500 would for sure cover the ask that we've had for the budget? So I wonder if we could come up with those numbers?
Wait, wait.
We still need a second for the motion before getting discussion.
There was no second.
Okay. Just making sure.
Can staff provide this?
I think Lisa had something like that for us at the last meeting.
Exactly.
So Lisa, if you've got that. The only comment I'd like to make, Mr. Mayor, is that we're not sitting here deciding that millage rate today. I think the public thinks we're making a decision today, and we're not.
We can make a decision to lower it today.
And never go back up. So if we're hit tomorrow with a hurricane.
Thank you for interrupting me. Please allow me to finish what I was going to say.
Exactly.
That's all I want to do, just explain to the public that we're not making a final decision today. And what other cities did, I think, was irresponsible, because once they turned in that millage rate, they can't go above it if their budget doesn't work out. All we did was set a millage rate by record as the highest that we could go. There is nothing that says we can't go lower. That's the decision that we're going to make at the end of this month. And if somebody doesn't understand that, please get with staff or ourselves. The decision's not made tonight.
We can make, we can lower it tonight.
To clarify, though, you do have to have a vote this evening.
Right.
Correct.
Right. But we can move that vote.
Correct.
To the 18th.
Yeah. Well, you can make the final vote.
Final vote, I'm sorry. Thank you. But to the 18th.
I'll second the motion.
What's that motion?
I just seconded the motion.
Which one?
The one to Laura.
Oh, Laura.
We stay where we are until the 18th, and then we're, and I, for one, look at this as we got a zero-cost insurance policy. And if we got hit by a hurricane, if you remember, Irma arrived on the 11th of September, so we've got insurance that if we got hit in the next week or 10 days or so, we've got coverage. If we don't get hit, I'm for rolling it back to where it was. That's what, that was my thinking originally. Some of you may agree with that, some of you may not, but it was never my intention to make.
Could you make that a motion?
I did.
Laura made a motion, he seconded it.
He seconded it.
But that's only, that's only for today.
Right.
It could, we can roll, we can do whatever we want when we hit the 18th.
Exactly.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd like to know if anybody on council has any concerns about this.
We need to have more than just the rollback and the raise. I think there should be a discussion somewhere what the middle point looks like. So for example, if the discussion is, say, you know, three of us really want it to go to the max, and two of us are like, no, we need to cut it, maybe there is a, maybe there's a happy meeting in there where we can kind of have a more, have a better win for everybody up here. So I think there should be more than just the rollback and what the raise could be like. So I don't know if that, the answer maybe is like, what does, what does something in the middle look like? I mean.
Lisa provided it to us. Let's look at it again. I mean, it's that simple. But we approve some more money or expenditures for next year, we've got to pay for it. And I'm just, I said this last year, I'm going to say it again. If I'm a member of the public, I don't want to look back and say, okay, so now they want to increase my taxes by 30, 40%, but they could have eased the pain by putting it up 10% last year. Nobody wants to get stuck with that budget. One way or another, we're going to have more expenses next year. And this soft landing that the media keeps talking about, you know, it's amazing, they've been wrong for four years, the media, but a soft landing, they're talking about, will we have a recession or not? Either way, our economy is slowing down dramatically. That means less revenues, guys. And in the state that we live in, Florida, fewer revenues means that we're going to have to tighten our belts. So let's be pragmatic about this. Let's look at the numbers Lisa has, and let's have a sensible vote on the 18th.
Okay, let me comment further. With a 35% increase in the millage rate, it's certainly going to drop the taxable values down, the property values will drop like a rock, and we will end up doing ourselves in, as far as I'm concerned. That's my opinion. We have the money to cover our emergency and our operating expenses. There's no real pressure need to burden our people.
So if revenues decrease, Mayor, which they probably will next year, how do we pay our bills? That $5 million isn't going to last long. So we're going to raise taxes even higher the following year when people are in economic distress? That's what I'm saying.
Well, you're going to put them in economic distress?
No, we're not here. We're not putting people in.
There's been a motion and a second. Could we call this question, please?
I will, I'll agree with Laura on that. Write that down, somebody.
Okay.
I'm going to agree with Laura on that one, so if somebody wants to write that part down to remember, call the question. I agree.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Bogaz.
Voting on the question?
We're voting on the motion in the second. Motion made by Councilmember Carr, second by Deputy Mayor Forbes.
We get to vote on whether we're going to, on the question?
Yes. And well, we're going to vote on the motion in the second, which is to approve the resolution as read by the city clerk.
What the mayor's asking is, he's asking for a roll call on the, on the motion to call the question. That's the question he's asking.
Okay. Are you trying to get a roll call on that?
Trying to get a roll call. Legally, we've got to have a vote on whether the question is, whether we want to eliminate discussion.
Do the vote to call question is what we would do. Okay.
First, there's a roll call on the question, whether we're going to stop the discussion at this time.
To clarify, you had a motion by Councilmember Carr for the roll call.
This is for the call of vote. Right, for the call of the question, to end discussion is what the mayor's asking.
The call for the question is an automatic vote on the motion. You're not.
I understand, but I'm trying to, trying to.
Without further discussion.
I'm trying to determine, make sure everyone knows what they're voting on.
We're voting on Laura's motion.
We're voting on.
We're calling, we're voting, first vote is on the call to question, which is what the mayor's for.
Voting on the question.
So then that, after that passes, then we will go to the next phase, and then we would vote on that.
Well, Derek was explaining what Chris said, that it's the same thing, but.
It is.
Roll call on the question.
This is a vote on the question. Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Council, Mayor Steinmeier.
No.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We need a vote on Laura's motion. Laura's motion.
Councilmember Purdon.
No.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
No.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
No.
The motion carries. Four to three.
Okay, anything else they have to do on that?
Not on that one.
On the budget?
No, they're doing the budget.
That takes us to item seven. This is a resolution of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, Lee County, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2024-2025, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, on September 4, 2024, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute 200.065. And whereas the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 as follows. Expenditures, general fund, $22,396,396. Special revenue, $5,109,685. Debt service, $3,532,706. Capital projects, $20,449,648. Total all funds, $51,488,435. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Florida. Number one, the fiscal year 2024-2025 tentative budget is hereby adopted. Number two, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by City Council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any more comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Motion carries.
A public comment on what we just did? No public comment? September 18th, we have another meeting at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the City Council meeting.
You're going to take it? Yeah.
We've had the invocation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I have to excuse myself from this part of the meeting. Prior application.
Okay, yes. Thank you. I should be interrupted.
Good luck. Good luck.
Roll, call is ordered. We've got, roll call, please.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz. She has to be excused.
Okay, adoption, public comment, public comment. We've got to get some public here.
Will you approve the agenda?
Do you have any motion on that?
Takes us to item six, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Any more comments?
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, public comment on the, any comment on the, what we just did?
Agenda.
Sorry, we're going to consent agenda. A public comment, did we get public comment? Nobody's moving today. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Any comment about what we just did? Thank you. Number nine, A, Mr. Corey.
Yes, there are, there are several grant opportunities with respect to the Benita Estero Rail Trail. And what I would like is for council to approve that city staff can investigate those. If there's any that come back where we would have to be the applicant of record, council would be voting on that, whether or not to pursue those grant opportunities. The ones that we're looking at currently as possibilities do not require any matching grants, it's just a matter of fulfilling the grant applications. And I would like authority for the staff to pursue those and write those grant applications up.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Okay, Derek, you're on deck for the.
Yeah, this is.
Is that a new name or just the same people with different name?
Well, no, this is, so this is, this is a new Trinity Enterprise Holdings. It's actually the Archdiocese of Venice. It's their land holding entity. So this is, this is one of the properties. We're acquiring some additional right-of-way towards the, along the Benita Grand Mine area to the future county, to the future city park and to the Keiker Preserve. So you have previously approved that route. We've identified and filed a claim for eminent domain against the properties that we weren't able to acquire voluntarily. All of that is funded through the settlement with BG Mines, so they, they fund through an escrow agreement. The acquisition and legal costs, the city is bearing. And so we have reached a tentative agreement with Trinity Enterprise Holdings, the Archdiocese, to acquire some of their land. And I'm seeking your approval to sign off on that agreement and to file the closure with the courts.
Motion to. Question, there's a retaining wall or something in there? Are they going to replace that, or is that our cost, or?
So all of the costs with respect to the acquisition of property and any business damages or anything related to it are all being resolved in this settlement. So now, we may incur additional funds when we decide to build the road, but as far as anything related to the property owners along, along Benita Grand, that will not be an issue. That's being covered here. So I believe there was.
I'm wondering whether there's a retaining wall or a berm currently that they're going to remove, that we're going to remove, or is going to get removed? Is that going to let drainage off of their property onto our road, or who knows?
So there, there is a, and I, Matt can help me if I get it wrong, but there is a retaining wall north of this property with the three hard-working Americans property. They have a permitted berm, and that is an issue of discussion. But I believe that the sheet flow goes the other direction, so I don't think there's any issues with respect to water coming off this piece of property affecting us.
But that's, this is not the last piece?
No, this is not the last.
We've still got to work with the three.
Three hard-working Americans is one of the pieces that we're trying to acquire.
Okay. Okay, I'm motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Thank you.
Community Development Act, activity, I guess, this is John.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Previously to our response to Hurricane Ian, Community Development was providing monthly updates on permitting. One of the suggestions that had come up recently from council meeting is to discuss when we would like to start rolling back the, the reduction or the cost of the permit fees for Hurricane Ian. So what we're starting with is back to our monthly reports on the status of community development permits, and then we can be working towards a method by January 1, is what we talked about with proper notification, that the permit fees would go back into place.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With that introduction, we will start off with the first couple of graphs on this presentation. And you can see what we're looking at in terms of Hurricane Ian fee waivers. It also shows you up in the upper left by month, upper right by years, and then down again by building type and by year in the chart. So total to date, you have waived $882,096 in building permit fees. So we are well on our way to recovery, thank goodness. Getting to the next page. What we're trying to do in the next couple of graphs is kind of talk about activity level in the department, and the phone calls and customers that you're going to see on there. Phone calls are all for general numbers and landlines. They don't include cell phones, they don't include direct numbers. So if you call Mrs. Gensen's office directly, that would not be included in this. But if you call the main number, it would be. So we've, of course, you know, we start these presentations in one of our slower months, so you'll see most of the numbers are down month to month. As to. So you'll see most of the numbers are down month to month, as to be expected. And they'll probably be down again, uh, this month as well. We'll probably start seeing an increase again coming in October and November. But we're looking at, uh, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, of fifty-six-hundred phone calls last month, uh, coming in, another eighty-five-hundred going out. And we've had about a thousand people that have gone into the lobby either filing permits or wanting to talk to the planner on call. So those people averaged waiting about five and a half minutes, uh, per person. So not awful and definitely coming down off of what it was a couple of years ago when we had about twenty, thirty people in the office at all times. Getting into the, uh, building department and applications by type, uh, those were what was filed last month. It does not include what was issued last month. So those are the applications that came into the department. And the, uh, numbers that you'll see reflect the same thing. So once again, it's August data, so we're down a little bit. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
What's the T R A?
Trade.
Huh?
Trade permits.
Trade?
Yes, sir.
Permits to do, to, to trade what?
They, they tend to be, uh, trades of like plumbing, HVAC, electric.
Oh, trades?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Trading properties or something to trade in, you know, trades?
No, sir, that's a different slide.
Yeah, okay, it's the same word means different things. Okay, thank you.
Moving to the next page, we start talking about inspections and revenue. And as you can see, we did about twenty-nine-hundred inspections last month. Revenue is, has fluctuated a little bit. And we have probably three larger building permits that are ready to be issued. They've been reviewed, uh, and they will be rather large in terms of building permit fees for each of those, in addition to what we normally see, uh, with trades and residential building permits. Uh, the reviews, we're looking at about twelve-hundred building reviews. And, uh, we had about fifteen new businesses open up last month, so we're not doing too bad. Uh, we had, we averaged somewhere around eighty to a hundred people coming into the office asking planning questions. And so that does not include the emails or the phone calls that come in. Those are just people that come by and stop by and say hello. Uh, zoning applications, uh, as you can see. And working our way through, uh, development services, those tend to be engineering permits, site development permits. So when you're looking at those, those have ranged anywhere from twenty to thirty-five, uh, over the past couple of months. And we've had, last month, we did a hundred-and-fifteen inspections with those. And this is really a continued process in terms of refining what we're presenting and how we're presenting it to you. If there are things that you would like to see or that you're not seeing in this report, please just let me know and if we can track it, I'm happy to, to bring it up. So I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts. Yes, sir.
The two projects that you were talking about, John, residential, commercial, or both?
They're commercial permits, but they are residential in nature. So one of them is a high-rise and the other one is, um, another larger residential project.
Are they entities that we know?
Yes, sir.
It's a good thing.
There are already ones that you've approved, they're already under, uh, parts of them are already under construction, so.
I see where we got two-point-eight million dollars in, uh, impact fees, residential impact fees in July. Does that show up anywhere on your, your chart?
Nope, but we can put impact fees in here. They're not, they're not currently included, but I'd be happy to place them in the chart. We can do that. Break it down by, by impact permit fee type. Yes, sir.
Residential and, uh, the park fees, park impact fees. Greg puts us over our projected budget for the year by quite a bit, three million dollars at one, one month. What, do you know what project that might be?
Uh, I believe that was, was the high-rise?
I-75.
Bonita Seventy-Five. So that was the, the apartment complex that Bonita Beach Road and I-75.
Yeah, that's been.
Yes, sir.
Been stumbling along for a while, okay, they finally come up with the money, okay, very good. There's a lot of people. Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To continuing of the Hurricane Ian recovery, I wanted to make you all aware that we continue to work with the local representatives of FEMA. We have, uh, almost completed our corrective action plan, which is the first deadline, which was to be due, um, September sixteenth. Um, our consultants are looking at it now. We've got a few more tweaks and we plan on giving the draft to, um, the FEMA representatives tomorrow. And when, when we do the draft, we'll be distributing it to council as well. Upon that, we've been informed that that will be forwarded to, um, the Region Four Director and then on to, uh, offices in Washington, DC. We are hopeful to get feedback as soon as possible. So the, the idea of providing the draft now is so that we would get feedback prior to the September deadline so that we can make any, uh, changes that they may request so that we would be in compliance by that date. We have also been assured by the local representatives in FEMA that should DC take a little longer to provide that input, we still have until November to have a finalized corrective action plan. The only requirement for the September sixteenth deadline was to submit the plan. So we have time to continue to negotiate regarding that plan. Also, uh, the letter that, uh, was provided by the City of Bonita Springs to residents who potentially received a letter from FEMA. We've been informed that some folks got a city letter that may not have received their FEMA letters. And, um, so we, out of abundance of caution, we, uh, we assimilated all the addresses that we understood to be in the special flood high hazard. So if we've over notified, we're, we're grateful we've over notified. So, um, we're still stand ready to answer any questions or concerns, um, and we continue to take those calls regularly. Also, in the Hurricane Ian update, um, as of yesterday, Lee County Commission, uh, voted to approve twenty-one million dollars for the Ragsdale, Pennsylvania, uh, Royal Corridor project, which is part of the CDBGDR programming. Um, we did receive a list of all the other programmed, um, and funded projects that you should have in your inbox. But it was confirmed at yesterday's meeting of, of that award. So staff will continue to work through that process. I want to thank staff for all their efforts in, um, drafting the, uh, the, the, uh, application and moving that forward. We did receive our update from the University of Florida Business, um, Bieber Report. Um, the official population of the city of Bonita Springs that we utilize for all our grant activities has shown an increase of two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-two persons. Up from last year, the population was fifty-four-thousand-eight-sixty-two. The preliminary population estimate as of April one, twenty-twenty-four is fifty-six-thousand-and-sixty persons, six of which are inmate population. So that will be the new number that we use as official population estimate. And last but definitely not least, I would like to take this opportunity as staff to recognize, um, Michael J. Sheffield, our, uh, own city clerk, who is now one of, uh, very few, um, certified by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks as of August eighth, twenty-twenty-four. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's see, Mayor wanna report that if you go to the beach, you'll find that, uh, Lee County has repaved, uh, Bonita Beach Road around Luke Street. It's as smooth as glass. It's been, I mean, I've been after it for three or four years to get it done. And I happened to run into it last night. They work at night and it's beautiful. I don't know if they're completely done, but it's, what they've done is beautiful. On, on, uh, A-Royale, they're working out there on A-Royale and Pennsylvania is.
That's Bonita Springs Utilities.
That's Bonita Springs Utilities. They're doing a, um, another phase of their waterline restoration, um, projects.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, I did wanna provide, I did speak to County Manager Harder today as well. Um, just to give you all a background, very similar to how the city responds, they are working through the process for the beach accesses. They are required in order to be reimbursed by FEMA to have, uh, a bid, a bid process, a design review. They're also needing to determine whether or not any additional elevations need to happen to those. But I understand design recommendations will be heard by the County Commission on September seventeenth to move forward. So they, they are working the process, but just as we do with our parks, there, there is a, there is a process to go through so that they're checking all their boxes so that they can be properly reimbursed by FEMA as well.
Very good, thank you for that report. Yes, Fred, you got anything to, for us tonight?
Yeah. Lays somewhat to what Chris Corey was asking staff to work on. MPO Executive Committee will be discussing, uh, giving a higher priority or a little more support to BERT at their meeting on the eleventh. That's the executive committee. And that means that at the main MPO meeting, there'll be most likely something on the docket for the whole MPO to vote on.
Okay, Jesse, how about?
Real quick, uh, thank you to the staff for working, uh, so hard in getting the Ragsdale Corridor, uh, stuff into the county. And then last, uh, congrats to Mike, that's awesome. Good job, that is, uh, really takes the professionalism of the city up a notch, so congratulations and thank you for that.
Thank you.
How about Laura?
Thank you. Again, congratulations, Mike, well deserved. At the Horizon Council meeting last week, Doug Hathaway of Land for Public Trust and Charles Heinz was there as well, but Doug made the presentation to the Horizon Council, uh, membership. And it was very well received and people were very excited. He's, he, Land for Public Trust is still working very hard to bring BERT around. And as Fred mentioned, uh, Wednesday, a week from the eleventh of September, MPO Executive Committee will be discussing prioritizing BERT along with Sun Trails and getting a plan in order and, um, and also working on all the grants. So, um, and Arlene is well aware of what and who to contact with regard to that. Ron, Julia, he's, yeah, so, um, instead of, you know, overlapping, uh, I, you know, think the staff will work with MPO. But that's all I got.
Okay, yes, Nigel, please.
Yes, sir. I wanna thank, um, Commissioner Greenwell. I thought that he would cancel our meeting the day before the elections, but he did not. And had the opportunity to spend two hours with him talking about our needs here in the city and support. I came away from the meeting, um, he actually genuinely listened. And, um, it really was very apparent to me that sometimes we forget they're dealing with a lot more entities than just Bonita Springs. And so for us, all on council, to develop a relationship or relationships with county commissioners, I think will bode us well. And going into the legislative session, um, knowing what Chris and Jesse and, uh, Jamie and I and Fred went through last year, disappointment obviously, getting things started early with this relationship building when we go in and ask for money, because we're gonna be fighting with a lot of other entities in the state of Florida for the same diminishing pot of dollars. So I'd encourage everybody to get those relationships started now or build on them. Oh, kinda fun, um, on Saturday, um, West Point Army will be coming to Boca Raton to take on my alma mater. And I'm happy to say that nine of our local veterans will be joining me to take the trip over and watch my fighting owls demolish Army, even though I'm a proud Army veteran, so.
Good luck.
I'll report at our next meeting. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, Chris?
I'm good.
You're good? Anything else? Uh, I got a question, can we get those trees cut down out of the railroad tracks? Can we, can the city get permission to cut the trees down? I mean, if it was my property, I'd be in jail.
The railroad is a property owner in the city and they have, um, we'd have to consult with them. I, I don't know whether they'll allow us, I don't know what trees you're referring to, but, um, they, they own that property wholesale. And so they, they have, they have rights like no other property owner in the city. They have their own police force, so I don't know.
Well, it's certainly, uh, downgrading the, the appearance of the city of Bonita Springs. If they wanna sell us something, they oughta clean it up.
We can certainly reach out to them, but, um, they have some pretty extensive property rights. They, they go back to the, uh, invention of the railroad.
Okay, uh, okay, they go back to the federal government too, probably.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I got friends. Okay, anything else?
Ma- Mayor, we have.
A public comment?
Two registered speakers, Sue Stoneman, and she'll be followed by Dan Cowden. Okay, Dan, Dan Cowden, and he'll be followed by Sue Stoneman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council. Uh, I'm, uh, Dan Cowden, I live in Imperial Harbor, right over here off Old Forty-One. Uh, I've been here approximately two years. We searched around, my wife and I, for about five years and finally decided on Bonita because of the friendliness and just love the area, just love the area. Uh, we have some water issues like everyone else, but I've been hitting brick walls with, uh, a lot of, uh, things. And I see you have an IT guy here. I don't know if he can put things up on the screen, uh, very easily or not.
We could hand, do you have something you would like to hand out?
Well, that's, I didn't make enough copies for everybody, I wasn't sure how the procedure went. First off, we're all getting, I'll, I'll let the council look at these. Uh, we're getting letters from FEMA on this that the community, which is the city of Bonita Springs, is supposed to help us, uh, with our flooding, not help us with our flood insurance, but help us from flooding. And this is the first letter, I'd just like to show that.
You're, you're in contact with FEMA directly?
Uh, FEMA is contacting the homeowners about their flood insurance, if they're getting discounts.
The homeowners association or everybody?
The homeowner, the landowner.
That's the letter that everybody got?
Everybody got it, I believe.
Yes.
Everybody got it.
Okay.
Yes. These next two pictures is just, uh, our area. If, uh, the council would like to take a look at this. And this just comes from rain, uh, periodically. It don't have to be a storm rolling in or nothing, this is just the rain. And what we're seeing, I've put on hip waders and done a lot of, uh, searching on what's going on and we don't have water flow. I've highlighted the areas here and I've put the strap numbers on it and who owns the property of this flow. Uh, some of it is on the railroad, uh, which was mentioned. Bonita Fairways Community Association, Gardens at Bon, uh, Burma Lake, uh, Home Dynamics, Bonita Fairway, and there's the railroad. And then the city of Bonita Springs.
Yeah, how much of it does the city own?
Uh, this one here is a city-owned road that the FPL has power to, that has tons of vegetation in it, that stops the flow going to Spring Creek, I believe. If you'd just like to take a peek at these, yes or no?
There's a man there, Matt Feeny, he's in charge of the drainage. For city property, now I don't, there's a lot of private property and private roads and paper roads.
Yes, sir, I, I understand that and I've been trying to knock on them doors and I'm getting nowhere. And that's why I'm here tonight to try and see what other doors that I can knock on 'cause time is on my side, I have plenty of time.
Well, Matt, Matt here, have you worked with Matt?
I do not know Matt. I've, uh, left some messages, messages at City Hall and, uh, I just can't seem to get a return from any of them also, and Matt wasn't one of them.
Uh, he's gonna call you now, I know he will. He's, he's responsible for this, we'll work on it.
Yeah, Matt, may I show you these, please?
Certainly. We would probably be best to meet offline so that we can get the details. Um, there's a lot of mixed ownership in Imperial Harbor and it's not maybe as simple as we'd all like it to be.
Yeah, it's very difficult.
Mayor, if I may, um, I've been out there, have you been at the meetings where I was? Okay.
Yes.
So you're aware that there are private property issues, that there are things that the city doesn't own or cannot control?
I am very aware of that, sir, and that's why I printed. And that's why I printed all this stuff off to show you who the owners are and where the, and where the doors have been closed. That's my time, I believe.
Okay, well, keep, keep, keep working with us. Don't be afraid to come in here, we'll do it. We'll get, we'll get it done somehow.
Sue Stoneman, did you wish to speak?
Thank you. Thank you for listening. My concerns too were mostly what Dan has mentioned. I've been there almost nine years and every storm we get, it doesn't have to be a hurricane. I can look over and see some of my neighbors and some of them are elderly and some of them are disabled taking their shoes off or wearing boots to get to their cars. I mean, it's just, there is no flow going out of there whatsoever. It just downpour and we're flooded. And we do own the property, so, and the city, my understanding was it was responsible for maintaining the streets. In the nine years that I've been there, I haven't seen anybody do the, you know, pull the drains up and clean them out and do any of that. Nothing's been done. And the second thing I was wanting to know, I don't know if you guys have any poll or can help us with this, is a couple of months ago, I had FPL, their meter broke on our house. So we only had, you know, half of the two-twenty in the house for a couple of days before they fixed it. But when they finally came out and fixed it, all they did is rig it, you know, they, they've got it hooked up. And instead of going to her, across the street of my house where the pole is that everybody else is hooked up to, they went behind me and they went behind me clear back to the street behind me with the line. So there's, I have the two-twenty line going from the back of my house to the street behind me. And they wrapped it in yellow tape and that was all. So we put some flags up and now the grass is getting higher than the flags. So we can't get it mowed because most of us pay to have our lawn mowed, you know, like most people do down here, the heat. And the neighbors are coming back from up north complaining because the grass is getting so long and they don't, they didn't even see the yellow line, the tape around the line, the two-twenty line that's there. And I've heard, you know, people talk about kids playing.
The two-twenty line is laying on top of the ground?
Yes. And there are other properties that we're aware of in other communities that have been laying there for a year. And they're supposed to come out and dig and put them in and they haven't.
So after the meeting, if we can get your contact information, we do have someone with government relations we could try to make contact with.
I appreciate it. Because the cover even came off of the meter. They, they had a cover on it and it, I found it laying on the ground a couple of days ago. And with the storms coming in and stuff, that's just open and dangerous, really.
I've got a phone number for you.
Appreciate it because we're not getting anywhere. And with regards to the FEMA letter that went around, what I was curious is, I mean, do you have, you said November would be the absolute deadline for, for getting everything in? And do you anticipate that, that's looking pretty good that we?
So this, so the city's response is that we're, we're doing everything asked for by FEMA and we feel like we've addressed everything. We also felt like we addressed everything prior to that as well. So we're just going to keep our coordination with FEMA. We're going to continue to provide any additional information they ask. So we're also implementing extra plans for them that they're reviewing. So we're going to follow the process as closely as we can.
I mean, our flood insurance right now is sky high now, so we lose that discount. I mean, anybody, not just us, but, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have your contact, right?
Yes, yes, I have it.
Thank you.
Any additional public speakers?
I guess we're about ready to go home? Anything else? We're adjourned, thank you, folks.